All right. Call tonight's meeting of the City of Casa Grande Council to order. And first item on the agenda is invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which we'll kind of do all at one time. And I'd like to welcome Chris Rabelato from Compass Church to lead us in our invocation. Thank you, Chris.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for today. Thank you for these great leaders. And Father, I pray you continue to give them great wisdom to know the right things to do and the courage to do them. We want to lift up two organizations, Salvation Army and Emergency Assistance Ministries, Father. We are so thankful for those ministries, thankful for the assistance they provide, a place where people can go and not feel less than, but get the support they need, the love they need, the tools they need to make a better way for themselves. And so, Father, we pray that you continue to bring the right leaders, bring the right volunteers and staff, and, Father God, that it make just a bigger, bigger impact going forward in this community, Lord, and allow many lives to be changed, not only physical needs met, spiritual needs are met, and, Father, emotional needs are met. Again, be with us the rest of this evening, in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Donna. Gloria, let the roll call show that we have one absent member.
Mayor, on the meeting minutes, section C.
Do we want to excuse her?
We have the -- I want to move to approve the City Council regular meeting minutes from May 6th as presented, and the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes from April 2nd as presented, and C3 is not the actual minutes that's listed here, so we'll put them on a future approval.
Okay.
As they're presented, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded with that change noted on item C3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, minutes are approved. Claims against the city, D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the claims dated May 1st through the 14th as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Anybody have any changes to the agenda?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Besides as so noted on the minutes. And do note the change on the minutes from the C3 is gone. Okay, seeing no other changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be pulled from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to pull off?
None.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda items are approved. Next item on our agenda is item H, which is public comments. And I am going to open the floor to public comments, but before I do that, I would like to actually make a call out to Cheryl Wilson and to Serenity. If you guys would want to come up, I have a proposition here that I'd like to --
Proposition?
Proclamation.
Proposition?
Proclamation.
It's easy for you to say.
Well, you have a pretty little helper there.
No, this is Serenity. She is a Miss Poppy. And so, as Memorial Day is approaching, we recognize the poppy as a symbol of recognition and memory of those who have passed, and really those who have served as well. So, this being the Monday before Memorial Day, we wanted to kind of bring a little special recognition to it and hope that whoever the amber alert is for gets found. But this is really a special day, and again, a special recognition. So, I want to thank you both for being here. And then also, I wanted to read this proposition, so if you'll bear with propositions.
Need these?
Thank you. So, this is a proclamation from the City of Casa Grande. Whereas poppies are worn and displayed as a symbol of tribute to our fallen and future living veterans and service members, whereas at the end of World War I, the American Legion adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and of the blood sacrificed by our troops in wartime. Symbolic use of the poppy comes from the poem "In Flanders' Fields," which starts, "In Flanders' fields, poppies blow between the crosses, row on row," and all this referring to the poppies that sprang up in the turned-up earth and the newly dug soldier graves over Belgium and France. If you read the whole poem, it will make you cry. Whereas the American Legion family has long used the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the blood shed by those who have served in our U.S. military, and it is fitting that as the American Legion approaches its 100th anniversary, they expanded the meaning and symbolism of the poppy, mirroring the manner in which the poppy is symbolically showcased in England and in Canada, and in celebrating fashion on their remembrance day, also as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. Whereas the poppy will be used to unite citizens from across the country who decide to show their patriotism, and whereas May 24th, which is this Friday, would be appropriate to designate as National Poppy Day. So, everybody, wear your poppy on Friday, in fact, wear it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Might as well take the whole weekend all the way to Memorial Day. Will therefore be it resolved that I, Craig McFarland, Mayor of the City of Casa Grande, support the designation of May 24th as National Poppy Day and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors to Casa Grande to join in observance this day to honor every service member and their families. So.
Thank you so much. Can we get a pic? Do you want to give the mayor a poppy?
Thank you.
That was running into that gunfire.
Over there?
Here we go.
If you forget what it's for, it tells you on here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How old are you? Are you in high school yet?
High school.
Nine.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd like to see you all wearing this on Monday.
I already got it on. Look at you. You didn't waste any time, neither one of you. Look at that. I had my ear put down.
I've got my pin in.
I'll put it in my hair.
All right. The floor is still open, so if there's anyone who would like to approach the council chambers, you could grab my glasses and hand them to me if you don't mind. I left them down there.
May I just pick you anywhere?
That was smooth.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Stephen. Otherwise, the meeting might just stop.
I think it has.
I might need that. Since that's the rest of the agenda. Okay. Anyone? Sorry. Sorry for the common routine. All right, seeing none, then we'll close the floor and continue with the agenda. All right, next item on the agenda is J, Boards and Commissions. This is a consider approval of Stacy Seaman to the Arts and Humanities Commission with a term to expire on September 30th, 2020. So, is Stacy here tonight?
No.
Can we do this just by a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to, we just want to make sure.
That everybody knows.
Sure.
Well, that's certainly a move that we appoint.
Wait, wait, wait. Gloria's saying something, sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, just wanted, just to take a moment to recognize our former mayor, Jeanette Rhodes, who did pass away, served on the commission for a number of years, and this is the position that you're going to be, like I'm Stacy, too Stacy, did previously serve on the Arts and Humanities Commission, and there's only a year left on this term, but just wanted to take a moment to recognize Jeanette Rhodes. She was a art lover. She enjoyed participating in the Arts and Humanities Commission and was a great contribution to the community of the arts.
Yeah, I want to thank her family for the time that she spent with the commission, and I also recognize Stacy, too, for stepping up and jumping on this, because this commission really does a lot of work. They do a lot of heavy lifting, so, thank you. Thank you, Gloria.
I move to approve.
He's moved to approve?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you to Stacy for stepping up. I'd like to make sure we recognize the volunteers, because they are all volunteers that are on our boards and commissions. It's a, they're important jobs, and they really do help the city out quite a bit. Okay, the next item is K. K1, Consider Resolution 5174. Mr. Teis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is the consideration of a resolution to adopt the Public Participation Plan associated with the General Plan Update Project. Let me see if I can get it on my screen. Hopefully here. I see it's on yours, right?
Yeah.
Want to switch seats with me?
No, hang on, maybe this is it. Push the B. I gave Stephen training earlier on how to update a system. Thank you, Stephen.
I have to tip Stephen.
As I was saying, the Public Participation Plan for the General Plan was discussed at your study session at your previous meeting, but tonight, I wanted to give you a little bit more detail regarding the plan, some changes we've made due to your input that you gave us at the study session, and formally adopt the resolution to start the implementation of the plan. So, state law actually requires that any, the amendment process for the General Plan include a city council adopted procedures that effective, to facilitate effective, early and continuous public participation from all geographic, ethnic, and economic areas of the city in the process. The state law further stipulates that the procedures shall provide for the broad dissemination of proposals and alternatives, the opportunity for written comments, public hearings after effective notice, open discussions, communications, and sharing of information, and consideration of public comments. So, the Public Participation Plan before you has been formulated to meet those requirements. In addition to meeting the statutory requirements, a comprehensive and effective public participation stakeholder process is essential to the ultimate success of the General Plan Update Process. Accordingly, staff is proposing a stakeholder process with the following elements to ensure an inclusive process: study sessions with both the planning commission and city council, creation of a technical advisory committee, creation of a steering forum, meetings with the youth commission, social media campaign, print media campaign, attendance at civic events, community meetings and public hearings on various planned elements, and finally, formal public hearings before both the planning commission and city council. So, little more details on some of those individual processes. For the study sessions with planning commission and council, the plan envisions coming before both you and planning commission at several stages to talk about the finalization of the scope, the initial draft of the plan, and then the final draft. The technical advisory committee would be appointed by the city manager and be really a, have representations from agencies that have a role to play in the development of the various elements of the general plan. In your RCA, the actual plan details, a list of all those agency representatives that would be asked to serve on the technical advisory committee. The steering forum is more of a broad-based community group, appointed by the mayor with concurrence of council, and its role is to help steer the direction of the plan to be and to be sounding board for the various community groups and interests they represent. And again, those interest groups are listed in your RCA Public Participation Plan. It's a very, very broad-based group. Think about 30 representatives. Social media campaign, I think would be a big part of this general plan effort. I don't think it was really a large portion of the previous update, but with the changes in how folks communicate these days, we believe it will be a very critical portion of this plan. Print media campaign, that we did add that as a result of your input from your study session, and I also noted, noted that the print media would be both in English and Spanish as appropriate.
Certainly is connected.
Community, public meetings and attendance at civic events. We're going to go out in the community and talk about the plan at various appropriate venues, and again, the presentation would be made in both English and Spanish as appropriate, depending on sort of the demographic of the audience. We, the state law does require a 60-day review period of the final draft to various agencies, including yourself and all surrounding governments, to review and comment on the plan, as well as a review and comment by any member of the public that might want to look at the plan and the final draft and make formal comments. And lastly, the process would end with a formal public hearings before, before both planning commission and city council. The intent here is that all the input would have been received much way before these public hearings, and these would be more formal and procedural than really get any meaningful input at this point, because you don't want input at the end. You want all the input at the beginning. So, next steps would be assuming council approves a resolution this evening, we would then start appointing members to the technical advisory committee, we would be finalizing appointments to the steering forum, and starting to schedule the meetings for these groups to start meeting and discussing and providing meaningful, meaningful input into the general plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Paul, are we going to have some like we've done in the past, community meetings, like we could have in this room right here and just, just let the public? Are we going to have somebody to lead this, or are we going to do it internally, or?
So, the answer to your first question is absolutely, we're going to have some general community meetings. You can see them here on the top of this slide, right? But it would probably be on certain elements. For example, let's say we're talking about water resources, right? Then we'd have a meeting to discuss water, right? Or let's say we're talking about community, you know, recreational aspects. We'd have that topic discussed. So, probably would be topic-specific, might be a couple topics, but absolutely, general community meetings would be held. And we would ask, have our consultant to help facilitate those meetings and use, you know, some techniques that they're aware of to really facilitate the discussion and sort of pull good, meaningful public input out of the process.
Have you identified a consultant yet, or?
No, actually, the request for qualifications should go out later this week. I just worked on the final draft today, so I expect that consultant contract will be back before council in mid-July.
Very organized. Bob?
Do we specifically target investors and such to participate in this?
Yes, we do. And the, actually, in the steering forum list, I have listed in the steering forum several representatives of, that would sort of look at that group. We have a land developer of commercial and industrial property, a land developer for residential, land developer for redevelopment and fill sites, home builders, chamber of commerce representative, business owner, industrial facility owner, commercial industrial realtors, residential realtors. All of those.
And what I was asking, that's for the steering committee?
Yes, the steering forum.
For just, are we targeting them for just attendance?
You know?
A lot of those folks don't live here, but, but they certainly should be interested, I would think.
So, what I'm hoping is that the representatives of those groups will find ways to reach out to their organizations and make them aware of the process and gather input. I mean, that's sort of the role of the steering forum members, is to reach out to their special interest groups, and if, but of course, you know, if the board of realtors, for example, wanted a, a meeting to discuss the general plan, we could facilitate that meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, of course, the key is getting the public participation, whether it's businesses or, or the community. I think that it, we need to make sure whoever's doing the outreach is kind of bringing it to, you know, like the basic level, like what does this mean? You know, to us, we know what the general plan is, but for 90% probably of the community, they might not know exactly what it is. So, I think when we're advertising and we're going, you know, bringing people into these meetings, we need to really make it as basic as possible and show, you know, let them know how they can provide the input that can, you know, that can impact this general plan. So, I think that's going to be critical, just to kind of think outside of your expertise and everyone else's expertise and how we can bring it to, you know, to people to understand what's going on. And then as far as on these committees, you know, just making sure that we diversify the representation. You know, just don't bring the same people that we bring in for, you know, to represent whatever industry it is. Really try to, you know, get, get more people involved, and I don't know if there's something we can do on the website that says, this is what we're looking for in these industries. If you're interested, we can possibly consider them for, you know, one of, one of those, those areas. Just, just so we're making sure that we're diversifying the, the representation.
All very good comments, and we'll certainly will attempt to do everything that you've just suggested.
Thank you.
I think in agreement with Lisa is that one of the things when you think about builders versus youth commission, is understanding, and so I think that the consultant probably has done that in the past, so that's the one thing that I would challenge them with.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing then, seeing none, then I'll consider resolution number 5174.
Resolution number, resolution number 5174, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Public Participation Plan for the 2030 General Plan Update.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5174 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is K2, Consider Resolution Number 5175.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to lower the hourly fees charged to the Evergreen Irrigation System customers to a new rate of $7.25 per hour. This represents a cost reduction from the current $14.50 an hour rate. As presented in several study sessions to you over the past few months, it is clear the Evergreen Irrigation System is delivering a lower flow of water than in past years. Currently, it's delivering approximately 100 gallons per minute to the customers. Because of the lower flow of water, staff is recommending to lower the fee. This will allow customers more options in their decision-making process on watering in the Evergreen Irrigation System. I, in the RCA, I did put a chart that shows there is a city subsidy annually. It's ranged from $11,000 to approximately $17,000 over the last three years. With that, I would stand for questions.
So, what would that increase our costs to?
And, you know, it's really unclear, because we don't know if the customers are going to water longer. You know, in theory, you could water twice as much time for the same fee.
Same amount of money, yeah.
So, if, if everybody watered exactly the same number of hours, it'll cut our revenue in half, obviously, because we're cutting the fee in half. But it's very unsure of what customers will decide to do. Currently, we have revenue this past year, or this year to date, of about $5,400 with expenses of about $22,000 for a $17,000 difference right now on this annual budget.
That doesn't sound good.
It doesn't sound good, Mayor. I'll concur, but I think this is a, a good, fair, temporary solution to a problem we have, because as when we first voted on that well, it was supposed to flow a lot more than what it actually did, is producing now, so I think to be fair to those residents, at this point, it's a, you know, it's not going to make that much of a difference, so, I mean, you know, I think it's a good solution. I appreciate you guys doing that.
And, you know, I, I think that the key word, sorry, I think the key word is temporary.
Thank you for picking.
It's a temporary fix.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
The, truthfully, the expectation was, after going about six months without water from anything, that we were going to get in a new pump that would produce at least twice as much water as we'd got before, and it's down to just a few customers right now. But the, all that we're doing here is cutting the rate. We're not saying anything about future adjustments or what we're going to have to do about that, but the, as I say, I, I think that in fairness, you know, you almost need to be buying that by the gallon, and to run the pump is not going to cost the city that much more. It'd have the fee, because the, as I say, the water's free. The, we don't have to buy that from anybody, so.
Just a question. I'm in favor of this. I, I think we've all heard from members of that, of that system that, that are supportive of this adjustment. It seems fair at this point, but what is our next step? Do we have another study session set, or? Because we, we've got to address it long-term.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the councilman Huddleston, specific question. We do have, staff has developed a series of recommendations that we were anticipating bringing to council. In fact, we're going to do that this evening, but several of the residents and customers on this system are out of, out of town tonight, and so they had asked that we not do that until they had an opportunity to come before the council. So, we're working on a date, we're working on another meeting with several of the, of the residents, as well as a date specifically to make that recommendation to the mayor and council, so I would say June or July.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, then I'll consider resolution number 5175. Or can I get a resolution?
Resolution number 5175, a resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to reduce the hourly fees charged to the Evergreen Irrigation System customers.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5175.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland? Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item L, public meetings, public hearings, open record review and closed record reviews. Item L1 is a public hearing to consider resolution number 5176. Selena.
Mayor and members of council, thank you. Tonight, we have a public hearing and our request to approve the city's consolidated fee schedule, which includes water and wastewater fees that would be effective July 1, 2019. I just wanted to first note that although we did provide notice that there would be a potential increase in the monthly services for water, sanitation, and wastewater, the final proposal before you tonight does not include an increase to the monthly service fees. There is, however, two line, new line items for wastewater. One would be for the disconnect fee and one would be for the connect, reconnect fee, should we move forward with the program to disable or discontinue utilities for past due bills. But other than that, there is no increase to the monthly service fees.
Selena, that fee is for those who continue to not pay, correct?
That's correct.
If they decide to disconnect their service.
That's correct.
Okay.
But other than that, just as a recap, I know that we just did a study session. We do have some proposed adjustments based on recapturing the costs of services and updating names and making things more transparent on the schedule itself. We did go through the public notice process and posted sixty days prior to today's hearing. The highlighted changes really are, for everybody who had photocopy fees, we did make those consistent. Community services added a fee to add a member to a membership, plus had some room rental fees, as well as some drop-in and practice fees. And then, on the planning development side, again, that's where a lot of the more clerical, kind of clarifications were with the fees, and that is really a recap of the previous changes that were highlighted earlier.
Steve? The fees at the rec center are still waived until the end of May, correct?
Correct.
So, it's free until June 1?
Yes, we're taking applications for membership now, but the people that walk in, we have them sign a waiver and they can utilize the facility, have no charge during the month of May.
Great, yeah, no, it's a good plan. Thank you.
I just want to make one point about the sewer disconnect fee, is that this isn't just if you miss one payment in a month, it's after we've tried to recover. It's quite a process, so it's not going to be something new, where if you miss one month payment, you're going to go through that, correct?
That's correct. There's a minimum of about a twelve-month process to try to help a customer become current.
I just wanted to be clear that it's not all of a sudden, so, thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Matt. Mary, anything? Donna? I mean, Mary, did I do that? Lisa?
Didn't call anybody, may I stay here?
I know. I'm losing it. All right, seeing no other comments, then can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing. Pardon me, thank you for correcting me. I told you I was losing it. So, being a public hearing and not hearing any other comments from the council, I will open the floor for public comment, if you would like to address the council on this subject. See, I knew they weren't going to make any comments. All right, seeing none, I'll close the floor, and then, now call for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5176, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting and declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled FY 2019, 2019 through 2020 consolidated fee schedule, effective July 1, 2019, authorizing the city manager to provide for the temporary reduction of rates and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of resolution number 5176 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protan McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, we don't have any executive session tonight, correct, Larry?
Correct.
All right, so move to item N, reports, and I'm going to start with Lisa.
Ooh.
Ms. Fitzgibbons, I'm just going to call you by your last name.
Thank you, Mayor Jackson, I mean, McFarland.
Touche.
I've been wanting to do that.
I know.
So, no, let's see, I know the mayor is on the Pennell Alliance for Economic Growth, they had their lunch last week, and there's a pretty good group of people that attended. They gave an update on Lucid Motors, Nicola, and then the land, what was he, the land investor, the real estate, commercial land?
Commercial real estate.
Right. So, it was, it was, it was good, and especially for people that aren't aware of what's going on, you know, I don't know if there was a lot of new information, but it was really a nice update. As far as the budget retreat, you know, thank you to staff. I know it's a tough exercise to go through when you're getting your hands chopped off every time you come in and request something, but I know, you know, Selena and the rest of the staff and Larry and everyone did a great job, and so, you know, I think, I think we're in good shape for this year, as much as we can be. The mayor's task force on homelessness had a quarterly meeting, everyone gave an update, so it's exciting to see all the different committees and what they're doing. The resource center is rolling along, you know, they, they get, you know, four or five calls a day, people are stopping in and requesting services. They did seventeen haircuts today, you know, so of course, it's a work in progress and, you know, it's just a learning experience for everyone, but people are going, and the word is getting out, and of course, we have to tweak different services here and there, but, you know, a lot of the agencies are catching on and offering their services there. So, thanks for everyone who's volunteered. The recreation center, I'm hearing really good things about it, and I'll tell you, the best comment I got was, someone said, "There's just so many kids there," and it just made me happy, because I think that's what we wanted. You know, we wanted the kids to be there.
Place for kids to go.
We, I was seeing kids, kids walking down the street with their basketball over there. I was at a graduation party this weekend, and someone that's a freshman in high school said that that's the hangout for the freshmen, you know, a place to go. So, you know, that's what we wanted, so I was happy when that person told me that. You know, of course, we have this is the season with graduations, so congratulations, there's so many exciting things going out for, to, for a lot of our seniors and college kids. A lot of our kids are graduating and doing great things from college, so congratulations to everyone, and happy Memorial Day. You know, it's just a nice, long weekend, celebrating, you know, all those who serve, so be safe, be safe, everyone.
Yes. Donna?
Just a couple of things, I attended the police memorial ceremony over in Florence, and the chief was there, along with several of our officers, and they paid tribute to Tate Lynch. It was really nice to have, to see his kids there. Couple other things, Promenade Mall, you know, I know everybody's talking about how things are dying, not dying out there. They had a great event this, this past weekend, they had their first farmer's market, and there were hundreds of people that came through there, so it was really nice that they're thinking outside the box to get people there, so congratulations to them. And then, locally downtown, today, there was a group called the Pennell County Heroes, it's an online group that, every month, they look at different people, and they have, small businesses was this month, and people are allowed to nominate small businesses from around the county, people can go online. And this month, for the Small Business Award, Mary Ann at the Cookie Jar won that, and we were down there giving her kudos and surprise, she didn't know that they were coming. So, that was really nice to be part of that. And lastly, to Steve and Aaron, oh my gosh, I know you guys are living at the community center, because I've been coming in at 5:15, and somebody, you guys are always there, but you know, to Lisa's point, I will tell you that I went and I lasted about fifteen minutes right after school, and I thought, I better just not do that right now, because there were tons of kids, but that's what we wanted. And so, we just have to understand that, you know, until the end of the month, till things quiet down, we need to be patient, and people need to be, you know, patient, but I can't tell you the feeling, walking around that track and seeing hundreds of kids below, having a good time. I know your staff is working so hard, and you have been so positive, and I just want you to know that there's a lot of people saying really good things, so thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Donna.
My turn? Yeah, I wanted to give compliments to staff, Selena especially, for the budget retreat. We got a lot of good information, it is a lot of depth, but it was helpful to me especially to just get a picture of where, where we are right now, and I, and I think it's basically good news. I mean, there's always challenges, but I was pleased with it. Also, attended the Biz Outlook luncheon, and kudos to the mayor on your marketing plan. I think it's excellent, I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. I do think we need to promote the city as much as we can, and I, and I think you laid out a great plan. I was also going to comment on Memorial Day, I believe city offices are going to be closed Monday, and I hope everyone enjoys it. I just wanted to give a couple of quick facts about Memorial Day, that it came about in 1868, after the Civil War, after almost half a million Americans died in that conflict, and several years later, it was adopted to honor all military deaths from the Revolutionary War to date, and it's estimated that about 1.35 million servicemen have died in those wars and conflicts. Something to remember that day while we're having our barbecues and enjoying the day off. And there's also a moment in time when we're asked to specifically remember all those that have been killed, and that's 3:00 PM in the afternoon. So, if you would look at your watch, and even if you're flipping a burger at 3:00 PM, it's a good time to remember all those that sacrificed so much. Thank you.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. Well, I had the pleasure this weekend of spending a lot of time with the youth commission. We had our meeting here at 7:30 AM on Saturday, and we had some good interviews, and we're still accepting applications for the interview process to fill our board. We had a good time there, and then I, we supported our neighbors in Maricopa that evening with their end-of-the-year party, we got to go to the Ultra Star Multitainment Center, not the casino with the kids, but the one next door. So, they played, I should say, we played laser tag and went bowling. I was conned into playing laser tag, and I did get dead last to all the kids, both games. But they had a wonderful time, and we got a city van, took it over there, and it was just a great experience in a really nice facility. I can't wait until ours goes in at the mall, because then we won't have to go to Maricopa for that. But it was just great, and the kids are getting excited about graduation, and to piggyback off that, I always quiz them about what's going on, and the rec center, of course, was a big thing. And one of my favorite comments I heard from them, and I've heard from other people in the community, is, "I can't believe this is in Casa Grande." And I, I mean, I hate that we have that app, because we deserve and we need nice things, but it makes me feel good that people think that it's so great, that it's something you would only see in a big city. To be honest, I haven't been there too much myself, but my wife has gone many times, and she had nothing but good things to say about your staff and the facility, just impressed, and she got a free Zumba shirt the other day, that was one size fits all. She brought it home, and that is a lie about one size fits all. I always like to, I always like to end with a little humor, so just picture that, and thank you.
Thank you for that, Matt.
I don't want to follow that.
Mr. Powell?
I, I went to graduation today, a promotion ceremony for my six-year-old granddaughter that's, that's going into first grade, and it was really neat, all the kids were lined up, and they gave out, for reading in kindergarten, they gave out like sight words they have, that you recognize by sight, and they teach them how to sound out, but a lot of the kids, I think McKenna was 110 sight words, and there's actually a couple of three that were 200 or 300, they're really, so there's some good teaching going on there, and that was impressive. The only thing I have about the facilities to kind of gripe about a little bit, I got a membership, and I haven't lost a pound or gained any muscle mass or anything, so.
You gotta go, Jim.
Oh, gotta go.
You gotta show up.
Come walk with me.
There you go.
5:15.
No guarantee.
Anything else?
Well, I'm going to go up to the, they're having a, I went to a water meeting this last week, that was the agricultural people, it was about a four-hour deal up in Tempe, and then, the, they're having one, the CAP, that's coming up, and it's, there's, there's kind of some good news, they actually, was enough rain and stuff from this year, that they feel pretty comfortable, they were thinking 2020 is going to be the year, that they might be able to kick it a year or two down the road. Now, they haven't really figured out if the, if this isn't the new reality, that it rains all the time, but they really have, this is the time they need to be working on what they're going to do. So, I'm going to go up on, to the CAP headquarters for the meeting they have, and they're going to have the 2020 plan that they'll, they'll share with everybody, and I'll share with everybody when I got back, but.
DCP? Okay. Well, I have some pretty exciting news that I would like to share with everybody. Can you pop that up on the screen, Stephen? So, I was notified this last week by ADOT, and this slide that you see here, these are the road signs, the major road signs that are on I-10, leading into Casa Grande from Phoenix. There's four major signs that have, that are directional signs, that all are in that sign 1, 2, 3, 4, and that's between, basically between our, our rest stop and our first exit. So, the existing one is the sign that's on the left, and the new sign will be the one on the right. So, we, they finally listened to us. I do not have a committed date yet, so with ADOT, anything is possible, but it's pretty exciting. This is the second sign, which will say north to Florence, and then the next two signs say the same thing, basically half a mile out, Casa Grande Coolidge, and then the last one, we actually will have a sign that says Casa Grande this exit, so which, which is a huge deal, I think, I mean, so.
Well, it does back further, say the next four exits, but then, when you get the exits, you don't know if that's where you are or not.
Right, right. You don't know if you're at the right exit.
Casa Grande's closest to that exit.
That's right, we're only like a couple hundred yards.
That's great.
So.
Good job.
Good job.
Can we all use visual aids in every place?
Well, it was easier than explaining it, just show pictures.
That was one of your goals.
It was, it was. So, I also have another update, I just heard today from TJ Shope, that the budget is pretty, is being wrapped up, and they're pretty close to a final budget, and one of the major pieces on there is a $10 million piece of budget for I-10 widening. So, that $10 million really is just for the, the planning phase, but he's got it in the budget, he thinks it'll stay, so that, that'll get us at least to camera-ready art, if you will, on the, on the, on I-10. So, good things, going in the right direction, there's been a lot of work on a lot of people's parts, so I'm excited.
At one point, they didn't even have the 25-year thing, so.
No, no, it wasn't even on the, on the plan. Just a couple other legislative updates, the highway safety fee is going to be phased out, actually, over five years, so this year it's 28, next year it's 24, and then it goes down each year, five, until it, until it gets phased out. So, that, that's in the budget. It doesn't look like the HERF funds will get rated, which is good, so we'll get, hopefully, our full allocation for our roads through, through the highway user funds. And then, they did, they did, are going to dedicate $130 million over the next five years for I-17 widening, so those of you who do drive up to Flagstaff, you're going to see some major construction. Again, I said the $10 million for I-10 widening is to study, the study piece between Casa Grande and Phoenix. If you head through Globe, they did approve a $2.8 million improvement on the Globe Bridge project, so that will affect people getting up to the White Mountains. And then, there's also an $18 million distribution to the counties and municipalities for infrastructure use, that they also included in, in the budget. I'm hoping that Pennell County is included. Right now, they're trying to carve us out, because we have a, we have a RTA, which we're not getting any money for, but, and then, $10 million in airport improvements, Larry, we need to try and get some of that, and $20 million for well construction for the farmers in Pennell County.
That's on there?
Yep.
Oh, wonderful.
So, good news, good news for, for the county and for our- So good news, good news for, for the county and for our farmers.
Just for everybody's news, too, that's for districts, irrigation districts.
Right.
It's not each farmer getting a new one.
Right, right. And I wanted to also reach out. Bill and Carol Civic reached out to me with a thank you note to, to the fire department. And Chief, I wanted to pass this along. I don't know if you wanted to take this before you leave, and maybe you could share it with the guys. But it was, it's, it's a hand typed, somebody wrote, typed this on a typewriter, which I haven't seen one of these in a long time, so I thought it was unique. Says, "Want to thank the Casa Grande Fire Department for coming to my home and attending to our smoke alarms today. It was comforting, it is a comforting thought that such people are here to help us in need. We should all be proud. We are Casa Grande residents since 2004." He says, "I'm a Korean War vet at 90 years old." So, very cool. And a big thank you to your guys, okay? I just wanted to also maybe just add, the CGhelps.com website is up and available. And if anybody has money that they would like to donate, they are accepting donations. So this is a selfless plug to go to CG. It's just the letter CGhelps.com. And there's a place there for people to donate. It's also going to be on the signs that you'll start to see. They're going up hopefully next week or so. Kevin, right? Yes. So we have 10 or 11 of these, no pan, or, you know, don't feed the panhandlers, basically, and ask you to give on CGhelps.com. So we can, we can do more with that money through the community, or through their resource center and, and through the whole CGhelps program. And I think we can get people off the street. And that's really what we want to do. Want to help them get off the street. Busy week last week, it was just crazy with the speeches and everything going on. And Honor Society, was at the Honor Society for ASU Prep last week. And then also had the fireside chat with Lucid and Peter Hessenkamp. He's our VP of Supply Chain. And then also had the, the Chambers Biz Outlook Luncheon on Friday. So that was after getting up at 6 o'clock and heading to a breakfast up at Santana with Mr. Rain. So it was, it was, it was a busy week. A lot of good things going on. Just got the current reports on home, home starts and permits. I was looking at 2018, like April, May, June, it was, April was 11, May was 10, June was 16, for a total last year, year-to-date of like 40. This year, in the first four months, we have 264 permits.
Say that again.
264 versus 40 last year. So that's a 560% increase over last year. So good things, good things happening.
There's a lot of PR on it about Pennell County.
Yeah, and then Pennell County is all, you know, I think there's a lot of good things going on in our county and really looking forward to it. Again, happy Memorial Day, everybody. On Monday, there is a Memorial Day event out at the cemetery. It starts at 9 o'clock. They'll start with a flyover. And then there's a program afterwards. So if you can come out, please come out and, and remember our vets. It's, it's a great event. It's a very sobering event. And I know I participated in, I participated in every year. And it's, I have to, I have to really try hard not to cry when I, when I talk at this event because it's very moving. But if you get a chance, please come out on Monday. It's, and we'll love to see everybody out there. So.
Be there.
Happy Memorial Day. Anybody else, any other comments? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.